We do everything, everything except as best we can. We don't do that. What moat do you take care of? We take some moat.
Three, I'm sure the recess time has expired. We're now moving back into open session. Public hearing MC sixteen oh one. D.R. Horton Crown of Conyers, Georgia requests modification of zoning conditions for the property located at one oh four Dora Drive and Land Lot one sixty-three, one ninety of the twelfth district. The property is located in an R three, single-family resident zoning district and consists of zero point six eight plus or minus acres. The request modification is regarding development regulation. Dante.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property, Saint Lawrence subdivision, was rezoned from RA to R two on October nineteen, two thousand and four with seven zoning conditions. The property owner is requesting to modify zoning condition number seven regarding a required forty-foot undisturbed buffer along the northern property line of the out parcels fronting Fairview Road. The applicant is requesting to modify the condition to read as follows. The development shall, and I'll place it on the overhead for your viewing. The development shall have a forty-foot undisturbed buffer along the northern property line of the out parcels fronting on Fairview Road with the following exception. Lot thirty-seven, address one oh four Dora Drive, may be improved in order to locate an entry monument within the forty-foot buffer and provide an associated sign easement to allow for maintenance. In areas where the land is devoid of natural buffer, the developer shall plant evergreen trees as needed to maintain the dense vegetation screening. Said buffer shall meet approval from the Department of the Development Plan Review. Should the Board of Commissioners wish to approve the applicant's request tonight, planning staff has no objection to the zoning condition modification to read as requested by the applicant.
What is that in the background? Is that what we're talking about, the entryway?
Here?
Yes.
It's a transpose sign. It's what it would look like when, if it were approved and they were able to place an entry.
You just leave that one up there. Not kidding, Lee.
If you want a closer view, here's one.
So would there have to be any vegetation cut down in order to make that look that way?
It would be. It's right now, it's an undisturbed buffer, so a portion of whatever's grown there now would need to be removed to allow the sign, but then they'll plant the evergreens as stated in the condition. They're amenable to replanting as needed and applicants here as well.
Okay, let's, applicant, would you please come forward?
Good evening. My name is Wanda Moore. I'm with Falcon Design Consultants, two three five Corporate Center Drive, and I'm here to represent the applicant tonight. The undisturbed buffer was a zoning condition, obviously, to buffer different uses. Do we have that little map that shows the flag? The front, right here, this is where the main subdivision is accessed by, and it's a flag lot, basically. And the subdivision behind it, are these larger homes, very nice homes, but on the front, since there's just right-of-way all the way to the street, there's no way to put, nowhere to put their entry monument. So the request is to be able to disturb the buffer enough to put the entry monument there and landscape easement so the maintenance of the signage and the landscape can be maintained out of someone's private lot.
Causeation plans for the entrance, do they plan on doing anything with the red dirt there or put inside or maybe additional trees?
That's existing conditions and that was taken during the winter time, I think, and the sod there would be improved. You see on the adjacent side, the sod and such. And literally out to the subdivision, that's a right-of-way. The sign would be located here and then any area behind it or around it that was impacted would be landscaped with evergreen trees to create the same buffer and the sign would just be in front of it. There's a little bit of grade change, so there has to be a little bit of grading to make sure the area is flat for the foundation.
Forty-foot buffer is normally requested by the adjacent property owner for the purpose of a buffer. Who, what was the purpose of this serving? I know it's, it looks like a vacant place right there to the top of it, right there where your finger is. Yes, so I'm sure that buffer was generated to protect something. So do we have record as to, at the public hearing, when this was designed, when it was approved, as to who asked for the?
We would have to pull the minutes to give exactly what the discussion was on why the buffer was implemented, but more than likely that buffer was placed there to separate or to have some type of separation between the subdivision and Fairview Road.
Has the owner been contacted for that land and know that we fixing to encroach on a forty-foot undisturbed buffer?
House there now, there's not a home there. The developer or the home builder bought the lot, but has not, there is no one in that lot right there where it would be impacted. To be honest, I'm not sure if it's a model home or not, but our company has done the grading and the lot plans for several lots in there and it's one of them.
How old is that subdivision?
Two thousand and four is when it was rezoned, so you're looking at thirty-eight lots. It's probably somewhere in the ballpark of ten years old.
And they're just now getting around to wanting a identification?
It's a similar, the lots were, went back to the bank and this particular home builder bought the lots recently. So the lots sat vacant for quite a while.
In that, how many people is already in this subdivision?
I think there are maybe three homes that are built.
How many?
Maybe three. There's not a whole lot.
The person who lives in that house, have they been contacted?
These, they've been made aware because the site has to be posted for variance or for the modification.
Contacted three people, somebody could went to their house and said, we plan on putting the entryway here. So who's that, is that common, whose property will it be on?
That will be on common property, being a landscape easement so that it could be maintained and not on private property.
So who owns the forty-foot buffer?
The forty-foot buffer are part of the lots and it's an undisturbed buffer, so the property owners own.
Did they own the forty-foot buffer?
That forty-foot buffer is to remain undisturbed, which constitutes them not being able to encroach into it. So technically, it's similar to open space.
That house we see right there, that forty-foot buffer goes with the lot in that house, is that correct?
Sorry, say it again, Mr. Chairman.
That forty-foot buffer, is it within the?
Yes.
Is it within the lot that the house is on? That is a house there, right?
There will be. This is another perspective of the lot.
So there's not a house there now?
No, sir.
That looked like it was a house there.
Yeah, it's a house on the opposite side of the street.
Look at this thing.
The final plat, it.
We can get that for you, Commissioner Prince. The final plat is located in the building department, but as far as the application, we just require the site plan, as you know. But they could zoom in to show where the buffer is here. This is not part of this lot next door to it. It is separate. The property line here separates it. So the buffer won't be part of a home that will be built eventually, if that's the question you're asking, Mr. Chairman.
The buffer won't be on private property?
No, sir. Private property is separated by this line here.
Dante, on one oh four Dory Drive, it's just showing the forty-foot landscape buffer, but it is showing the property inside private property.
And make sure I'm clear to understand what you're asking. Are you asking about this property line here or are you asking about?
I said it's a property line on the other side of the forty-foot buffer. Normally, the forty-foot buffer would lie within the plat itself of the house.
Right. It would, the difference it would make as far as the lot, overall lot size and obviously who's going to maintain the buffer.
Who's going to maintain the buffer?
I think that without seeing the final plat, I don't have a copy of the final plat and I apologize.
In this case, one life, the HOA may be responsible for maintaining the actual upkeep of where the sign will go. The buffer is to remain undisturbed, so there's no upkeep.
You can't maintain an undisturbed buffer.
Exactly. So there's no upkeep for an undisturbed buffer.
So that's common ground, is that what you're saying? So they're going, who owns that? The homeowners association?
No, the homeowner owns. If you look at this plat.
This is, yes, you're right. Commissioner Prince, yes. And that's what the modification would do. It would allow on this particular lot for there to be.
So who owns that now, a developer?
Yes, sir. There's not a home on it right now. So the change would take the area that's now in the lot and make a landscape easement and it would not be, quote, "private owned." It would be HOA-owned.
What would be HOA-owned?
The sign and the landscape.
On private property?
No, it would be recorded, re-recorded in a landscape easement.
Dante, I'm sorry, Chair. If this is put on the lot.
Final plat here in a moment.
If this is put on a lot, is it going to subtract out of the lot area, making the lot non-compliant, or is that just going to be an easement?
This will, so make sure I heard you correctly. You say, will it be easement or will it be subtracted out of the lot? Is that what you asked?
Yes, the area for the sign.
For the sign, it will be subtracted out of the forty-foot undisturbed buffer.
Okay, will it subtract from the lot area?
The area, correct.
Okay, if it does that, is it going to make the lot non-compliant?
It will, technically, the undisturbed buffer is supposed to remain undisturbed, so.
Non-compliant in area.
In area, it would depend on the final plat. So I guess if we wait a moment for the final plat, let's take a look.
Put that lot in non-conformance.
Technically, yes, it could.
Possibility. I don't think we'd want to do that.
No, but there are ways around non-conforming lots. There's variances issued or approved or to be heard by the zoning advisory board. They can grant a variance if a lot is non-conforming.
The area, just so I can clarify, we would not make this lot non-conforming. If it became an issue that the square footage of the lot deducted would make this non-conforming, then we just would not do an entrance sign. We're not going to lose a lot to stick an entrance sign there. We want to make a gateway into the community. The lot has to remain conforming to the minimum square footage and to do that, so we just need a modification of the zoning condition because it says right now it can't be disturbed.
Right. And so just so everybody's clear, the initial condition said that there was supposed to be a forty-foot undisturbed buffer to the northern property line towards Fairview Road. They're encroaching into the undisturbed buffer and they're asking, basically they're asking for permission to do so. And then they're going to add an access easement to that to maintain the sign in the buffer. They are willing to plant evergreens for the area that they disturb to make it a buffer again, to buffer between that home, northern subdivision and northern property line of Fairview Road.
Okay, District Five, you got any questions or comments? Anybody else got any questions or comments? Okay, I'm going to open up the floor for a public hearing. If anybody is for this, that means that you're coming up and you're going to say, yes, I want this structure here. I'm going to give you ten minutes, so if you're in favor of this request, just come to the podium, give your name, and the group will have ten minutes. I say again, you got ten minutes to be in favor. Having said that, now, if you do not want this, if you do not want that sign on that particular piece of property, I would take that that you are opposed to this action. So if you are opposed this, please come to the podium, state your name, and oppose this. You'll have ten minutes as a group. Seeing none, hearing none, I ask again, ten minutes for an opposition. Seeing none, hearing none, I declare that the public hearing criteria has been met. So I'm going to yield the floor to District Five.
Well, I'd like to sign. Are you asking for a motion? I'm going to vote to approve the signage.
Have a motion to approve, have a second? Second? District Two, all in, correction, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, so move. Thank you. Public hearing, comp AM fifteen oh six. Henry Promenade LLC of Atlanta, Georgia, request amendment to the comprehensive plan for property located in the south side of Jonesboro Road, east of Interstate seventy-five and north of Mount Carmel Road, Land Lot one one one, one one two, one one three, and one one four, the sixth district. The request is to amend the future land use designation. Dante.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting to amend the future land use map from medium-high-density residential to commercial for a portion of the applicant's proposed development. There is a concurrent rezoning running with this request and the applicant's proposed development site includes existing C three highway commercial zoning, zone property, and the current use of the subject property is vacant. The current RA, the residential agriculture and M one light manufacturing zoning designations of the subject property are inconsistent with the future land use map designation of medium-high-density residential. So the requested amendment to the future land use map would clarify the county's policy regarding the character of the respective area being largely commercial. The subject property sits on the southeast quadrant of I seventy-five, exit number two twenty-one, that interchange, and the adjoining property to the north along Jonesboro Road is an existing C three zone property which the applicant has included in the potential development site plan. The applicant needs the future land use map to be amended to designate the subject property as commercial, future land use to support the applicant's request for an associated rezoning from RA, residential agriculture, and M one light manufacturing to C three highway commercial. It is likely that the future land use map current designation of medium-high-density residential assumed that a commercial development along Jonesboro Road would not extend south to Mount Carmel Road. The designation of the subject property for medium-high-density residential is now in question mainly because the applicant's site plan proposes commercial development that will extend south to Mount Carmel Road. The applicant's request to amend the comprehensive plan's future land use designation for the subject property from medium-high-density residential to commercial is supported by the land use, housing, and transportation policies outlined in the Henry County and City's joint twenty thirty comprehensive plan. And I'll place those on the overhead so that you may take a look.
Anybody have any questions for staff at this point?
I'm in the zoning staff. Took it to the zoning advisory board, recommendation of approval on January twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen, and the zoning advisory board recommends the board of commissioners approval of the applicant's request.
Have you had any questions, Chad?
Anybody have any questions for staff? Having none, will the applicant come forward and present their case, please? State your name for the record.
I'm Richard Bell at one one, one three, one one five Addison Road. We are attempting a large-scale project here, approximately eight hundred and eighty-one thousand square feet. I think all of you are familiar with it, to be called Henry Promenade. As you can see, it doesn't delineate, I don't think you can see it very well, but it doesn't delineate on the map, but. This might be a little bit better. I don't know if I can stick my finger in here, but. The zoning in question is, as you can see, there's C three all along the front already in this area. We're talking about, is this the area we're discussing or these particular ones? The project will go from my finger, including this and along this area. And the future zoning is showing that the entire area is surrounded by commercial and we think it's consistent with the future use by rezoning the part in the middle, as you can see at this orange area here. Any questions?
Anybody got any questions for the applicant? Okay. Yes, sir?
I just want, because I think people, we've had, because we, at the last meeting, we had another presentation that was brought forward to us, and as people, you know, probably just want to understand things, is that we had a chance to meet with this applicant too, and Henry County has been very blessed that we have multiple opportunities coming to the county. We really are, and I think that a lot of people are concerned, what about the Jodico project? And I just, I feel like, because I know we're going to make a motion shortly, and I don't want people going, well, what happened to the other one? I think personally, I'm glad we have two facilities that are coming in and I have decided I'm not going to oppose the annexation from Stockbridge, assuming it's legal, that the attorneys go work out with the city of Stockbridge, because they offered some tremendous incentives at the city and I don't want to stop another project, but also I'm very, very pleased with this opportunity that's also come forward. I think we're very blessed here in Henry County. So, and thank you guys for being so patient, because I've watched you guys as we've been going through this agenda. Thank you for coming and making this investment in the county.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
I want to say that I will. Both projects, and I'm happy to see that the board of commissioners is not going to oppose the annexation for the city of Stockbridge. I think both of these projects are tremendous for our future and, you know, if there, if it becomes a question regarding which projects are going to get which retailers, if we are all free market believers, let the market determine, determine what happens between both projects. So I support you guys. I hope you do well, and I also support the Jodico project. And I think Stockbridge is going to do a phenomenal job with the Jodico project as well.
Yes, Chair?
Richard, you tell her that we've been talking about this for two years. I think this project's been going on a lot longer than that. It's a great project. It's going to be great for Henry County and I just look forward to y'all getting started.
Appreciate it. We've loved working with you.
Anybody else have comments? Okay, no more comments. I'm going to open the floor up for ten minutes for people that like to come to the podium and be in favor of this project. I say again, the floor is open for ten minutes to be in favor. That means if you want this built out there, you come up and tell us. Having said that twice and seen, heard none, I'm going to open up the floor for ten minutes total for anybody that opposes this for any reason. So if you would, come to the podium and state your name, please, and you have ten minutes.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you very much for your time and attention. My name is Jill Deutschman. I'm with the law firm, Reapartman, Simons and Wood, and I'm here on behalf of the Chen Estate and the developers of the Jodico Road project. And let me first say that I'm very pleased to hear of what appears to be very recent development in the county's decision to not oppose our attempt to annex into the city of Stockbridge. Having said that, until that determination has been made final, I have been sent here to put on record my client's constitutional objection to this application on the basis that the Henry County Code of Ordinances at Chapter twelve, Section zero zero point zero six, subsection B, states that when a development meeting the threshold standards established by the DCA, the ARC, and the GRTAs proposed, the county shall not take action, including actions by the administrator, zoning advisory board, or board of commissioners, on the development until the DRI review process is completed. And as has already been stated on the record, the zoning application board heard Henry Promenade's application and recommended approval on January twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen, and the development was advertised for the board of commissioners meeting on February eighteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Both of these actions occurred prior to the ARC's issuance of its final report on March second, and therefore, we object on the basis of a violation of equal protection in the application of, in what appears to be an arbitrary and capricious manner of the county ordinance. And again, I am setting forth this objection on the premise that we may need to preserve that right going forward if our attempts to proceed with our development are being interfered with. And if that is not an issue, then we will by all means not need to proceed any further than stating our objection on the record, but I hope everyone here understands our position.
Anybody else have any comments for opposing this?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else like to approach the bench? If not, I'm going to declare that the public hearing session has been complied with. So having said that, would the applicant, please come forward again, please? Anybody got any questions for the applicants or staff? If not, we have a resolution in the book requesting an amendment to the comprehensive plan, District Three. I'll yield the floor to you.
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the comprehensive plan for the property located at the south side of Jonesboro Road, east of I seventy-five and north of Mount Carmel Road, in Land Lots one eleven, one twelve, one thirteen, one fourteen of the sixth district.
Anybody second that motion?
Second.
Second, District Four, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Public hearing, RZ fifteen twenty-five, the same applicant, Henry Promenade, LLC of Atlanta, Georgia, requests rezoning from RA, residential agriculture, to M one, light manufacturing, to C three highway commercial for the property located at the south side of Jonesboro Road, east of Interstate seventy-five, north of Mount Carmel Road, in Land Lot one one, one one two, one one three, and one one four, the sixth district. Property consists of eighty-eight point six six one plus or minus acres and request is for a shopping center, District Three. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is requesting to rezone eighty-eight point six six one plus or minus acres from RA to M, and M one to C three highway commercial. It is the intent of the applicant to develop the subject property together with the existing C three zone property fronting on Jonesboro Road as a proposed commercial development totaling over a hundred and twenty-one acres.
over 121 acres. According to the applicant, the proposed, the proposed development will include retail, restaurants, and hotel uses, and the development is proposed to consist of approximately 891 plus or minus thousand square feet of commercial space, including anchor tenants, specialty retail restaurants, and two hotels totaling 220 rooms. The proposed development will not feature any residential uses. The size of the development required state evaluation as a development of regional impact, DRI number 22, 2527, through the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority, also known as Greta, and the Atlanta Regional Commission, also known as ARC. The state issued its notice of decision on Monday, March 7, 2016, which includes conditions, which are transportation improvements required of Henry County. As a result of the board of commissioners' approval of the applicant's concurrent request to amend the future land use map, the future land use map now supports the applicant's request to rezone the property to commercial. Planning and zoning staff took to the zoning advisory board a recommendation of approval on January 21st, 2016, with conditions, and the zoning advisory board recommends to the board of commissioners' approval of the applicant's request with 12 conditions, and I'll place those on the overhead for your viewing. Regarding the language of condition number one, which I would like to bring your attention to, considering, taking into consideration the notice of, of decision from Greta being received by the staff a week ago, Monday, to remain, and to remain in context pertaining to a development agreement, staff recommends the language of condition number one to read as follows, given, given my previous remark about Greta and their notice of decision. The applicant and/or the owners of the property, subject to this rezoning, shall enter into a development agreement with Henry County, which shall be recorded. The development agreement shall detail the implementation of zoning conditions imposed as part of an approved rezoning, including the treatment of the Greta notice of decision and conditions, and the timing of implementation. With that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions for staff? If not, will the applicant, applicant come forward, please?
Richard Bell.
Yes, sir. You, any comments you'd like to add to this?
This is just completing the commercial zoning, the last remaining area, which is, let's see, I'm going to remove these. The predominant area is about 55 or 56 acres, it's M1. Is this one, M1 in the future zoning? The future zoning is...
The future land use has that property that Richard is pointing to as medium-high density residential.
Yeah, there is.
That's it there.
This is the future land use, and you can see the broad area versus this area being assumed to move towards commercial, all the red area, and we're surrounded by the commercial zoning, and we just want to complete the zoning with this area represented in the gray. Is that the portion you're speaking of here? All the area in the gray.
Each parcel outlined in green, some of it, some of it gray, some of it just hash marked with white background.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, if not, I'm going to have a public hearing. I'm going to open the floor up for 10 minutes for anybody that's in favor of this rezoning request. So if you're in favor of it, come to the podium, state your name, and I'll allocate 10 minutes. See ye none, hear ye none. I'm now going to open the floor up for 10 minutes for anybody in opposition of this request. Come to the podium and state your name. You have 10 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Jill Deutschman, once again on behalf of the property owners and developer of the Jodico Road project, filing on record a constitutional objection based on the failure to abide by the strict construction requirements of the ordinance found at 12.00.06, for the same reasons as stated previously. If I need to set them forth in detail, I can, or does my last statement suffice?
Can you what now?
Can I just stand by my previous statement, or would you like me to restate it in full?
No, that's, that's fine. You, you just say you want to reiterate it, and then the record vindicates that whatever you said...
Okay.
Last time will be said this time.
Thank you.
Yeah, will that work with you, counsel?
That works.
Okay. Anybody else like to be heard in opposition of this? You've got nine minutes and five seconds. Hear ye none, see ye none, I declare the public hearing requirement has been met, so if the applicant would please come forward again, please? Anybody have any questions? If not, I yield the floor to District 3.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to rezone the property from RA Residential Agricultural to M1 Light Manufacturing to C3 Highway Commercial for the property located on the south side of Jonesboro Road, east of I-75, and north of Mount Carmel Road, and land lots 111, 112, 113, 114 of the 6th District, with the 12 conditions.
Okay, any event this has passed, will you agree with these 12 conditions as been exhibited?
Yes, we do.
You do? Okay, to hear second?
Second.
Second from District 4. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution is proven, an agreement between Henry County and Norfolk Southern Railway Company for Campground Road Extension, Rocky Romero.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. Campground Road Extension is a designated SPOS 3 project. Henry County proposed to construct a new bridge over the railroad at milepost 176 dot 26 dash H for the Campground Road Extension project. Norfolk Southern Railway Company will perform preliminary and construction engineering for the new bridge over the railroad tracks on Campground Road Extension for $53,085. Funding for construction engineering is available in the project account. Staff recommends approving the, an agreement between Henry County and Norfolk Southern Railway Company for preliminary, preliminary and construction engineering for the new bridge over the railroad on Campground Road Extension in the amount of $53,085. I'll take any questions.
Anybody got any questions? Comments? I yield the floor to District 4.
Chairman, Rocky, as this is my district and what I do, I wanted to explain to my constituents for a second exactly what we're doing here. The Campground Road Extension, initially, in this area is going to be two lanes, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I have opted to put in a four-lane bridge, and let me explain why to the constituents, because I know in the past, there was a four-lane bridge put on Rock Quarry Road crossing the railroad, and there's a reason for this. Rocky, how long did it take you to get the permit to cross Norfolk Southern's right-of-way?
It's taken us years just to get to this point, a long time. So it's, it's been a very complicated process. Every, anytime we deal with, with a railroad, this takes a lot of time and effort to, to get to this point.
Right, right. So what, what I'm doing, I'm opting to put the four-lane bridge in, and what this is going to do when we do widen Camp Brown Road, which it will be widened directly, we won't have to go back through this process. The second part of this, this bridge is going to cost about $7 million. When we do a four-lane bridge, it's going to cost about $9 million. If I was to go back after the fact and do a second bridge, we would have to go through all the permit process again and spend another $7 million. At that time, construction cost, I'm sure, will be higher, so we may spend $8 million on putting another bridge when I, for $2 million, I can go ahead and put the other lane in. And in defense of the four-lane bridge over Rock Quarry, we're in discussions now with widening Rock Quarry. I mean, we're, we're working on plans now to widen Rock Quarry, so it will not be long till that's used, and it was a very wise decision to actually put in the four-lane bridge because of the long-term effects and how long it takes to actually get things done. And so, I just want to tell my constituents, that's why, in the long run, it, it will save quite a bit of money, it will save a lot of time, and we're looking, we're projecting to the future, because again, as we saw tonight, in 2040, we're looking at 400,000 people in this county. So we, we, we have to project forward, I can't just design just for today. So I'm, I'm sure I'm going to get grief about putting a four-lane bridge in there, but in the long term, we're going to save a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of effort, and be able to service the community a whole lot better. So I, I just wanted to explain that to the community, let everybody know why I'm doing what I'm doing, so...
Yes, sir.
Now, on the construction of the bridge, I'm guessing the vents and columns and everything are going to have to be a little bit lower because of the...
Right. We've taken care of, of all the bridge design right now, so we had an issue early on regarding the, the power poles, those big transmission lines, but we have been able to taking care of that as well.
Okay, we do have the clearance and distance.
Yes, sir, yes.
Now, is this going to be super elevated? I can't tell by the...
Yes, sir, there will be a curve, and so yes, it will have super elevation on the, on the bridge.
Okay, all right. That's all I have.
Anybody else have any questions? I yield the floor to District 4. Have a motion to approve the agreement. Somebody second? Second, District 1. Any further discussion? In all favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign.
Thank you, sir.
Resolution awarding contract to provide Project 25, P25 Phase 2, compliance SiMUCAS trunk radio system for Henry County using SPOS 4 and E911 funds. Mr. Burkharta.
Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. The voters of Henry County approved the SPOS 4 referendum, which included funds for 911 radio replacement. The purchasing department solicited proposals to provide a P25 Phase 2 compliance SiMUCAS trunk radio system, and posted RFP number 15 dash 68 on the websites of the county, Team Georgia Marketplace, and ACCG slash GLGA. Perspective vendors were notified about the posting via the Team Georgia Marketplace and by email. Two responsive proposals were received. These were proposals were reviewed and scored by the evaluation committee. Attached to the resolution is the evaluation results from the committee. After numerous meetings and receiving clarification information and best and final offers from both vendors, the evaluation committee recommends awarding the contract to Harris Corporation with the highest score of 483 out of 575 in the amount of $8,606,913. The funding source is from SPOS 4, is $6 million, E911 funds, $2,606,913, for the total of $8,606,913, and staff recommends approval. I'll take any questions if you have.
Anybody have any questions? Not, does somebody move we approve this resolution?
Move to approve.
Have a motion, District 4?
Second.
Second, District, 2? Is that who it was? Oh, 5. Any further discussion? In all favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution is proven to purchase of four new 2016 Ford F-250 pickup trucks using SPOS 4 funds. Mr. Burkharta again.
Yes, sir. The voters of Henry County approved the SPOS 4 referendum, which included funds for Henry County DOT construction equipment replacement. The SPOS department is requesting authorization to use SPOS 4 funds to purchase four new 2016 Ford F-250 pickup trucks from Allen Vigil Ford Lincoln government sales using the state contract. The total cost for the four new 2016 F-250 pickup trucks, including options and delivery, is $115,853. Shown in the executive summary is the breakdown. Funds are available in the SPOS 4 calendar year 2016 Henry County DOT construction equipment account, and staff recommends approval. Do you have any questions?
I have a question. Why would we just get three F-250s with a long bed, only get one with a short bed? When it's a F-250, so you, you get an F-250 because it's heavy-duty, and you're probably going to haul stuff, and we're getting three that's a long bed and one is a short bed? Do we have an answer for that?
I'll ask the DOT director to come up and to...
Appears it's only about...
Attention, question, Chairman.
About a thousand dollars difference, it's, well, it's less than that.
He just wanted me to give him the pudding because he knew I was next. One of the trucks to replace him, Mr. Chairman, that's currently in our fleet, is a, is a quad cab, short bed, so we wanted it to be consistent with the use of that vehicle, so this will be a replacement for that existing vehicle. That was a crew cab, short bed truck, versus having a long bed.
Really, we're talking about $200 difference?
Yes, sir, and, and I spoke with the, with the individual that drives it, and it's their preference to have the short bed.
Okay. Does somebody move in that direction?
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve the motion, it's red. Any further discussions? No, we have a second for District 3, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Public hearing requests to abandon and declare surplus a portion of Henry County-owned property in the northeast quadrant of East Atlanta Road and Pinola Road for the Henry County Department of Transportation. Mr. Stroud, evening.
Evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is the county initiated a request to abandon and declare surplus a portion of Henry County-owned parcel. The parcel in question is 25 dash 04015000, located in the northeast quadrant of East Atlanta Road and Pinola Road, as shown on the attached plat marked Exhibit A, in the amount of 18,352 square feet, or .42 acres. As part of the SPOS project for the improvements of Pinola Road and East Atlanta Road intersection, Pinola Road was realigned to the north such that the roadway alignment split a parcel of property, leaving remnants to both the north and the south of the realigned roadway. As part of the right-of-way negotiations, the overall parcel was approved to be acquired by the Board of Commissioners. With East Atlanta Road being a potential future widening candidate, staff has created the plat keeping a 60-foot right-of-way from center of East Atlanta Road to the east side, as well as keeping additional right-of-way within the miter of the intersection. Be glad to answer any questions you may have on this proposed declaration of surplus.
Let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
I know we abandoned it, and we're going, are we going to sell this, we're going to get it appraised and take bids?
Yes, sir, that, that's the intent, with it being, it's, it's not, it's not right-of-way technically, with it, with it being the way that it is. It was purchased as parcel, so it's on the record books as an actual parcel for the county and not listed as right-of-way. So we're simply declaring county property surplus. But yes, sir, that is the intent, is to offer it to the adjournor for purchase.
It appears one has a building on it, would that be correct?
I'm sorry, sir?
It appears one has a building on the south, the south portion of the triangle?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So, we're going to appraise it, and then we're going to open it up and sell it?
Yeah, the, the only, the only part that we're, we're talking about having appraised and open to sale is the portion on the north side of Pinola Road. We're not talking about the southern side of the parcel at this time.
Okay. Let's see, what district's that in? 5? Somebody move in that direction? Oh, correction, I can't do that yet. Does anybody have any question for staff? If not, I'm going to open the floor up. Anybody have any objections to this? If you do have any objections, come forward, state your name. I say again, this is a public hearing, state your name, my position, or if you're in favor of it. See ye none, hear ye none, I'm saying the public hearing requirement has been met. Does somebody move we approve it or deny the, have a motion to approve? Does anyone have a second? Second? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Public hearing requests to abandon and declare surplus a portion of Thoroughbred Road right-of-way to the Henry County, for the Henry County Department of Transportation.
Good evening again, gentlemen. Thoroughbred Road along First Industrial Distribution Cooperative Incorporated site frontage has an 80-foot right-of-way. It's an offset right-of-way with 55 feet west of center and 25 feet east of center of the roadway. First Industrial LP has requested abandonment of a portion of the right-of-way as it relates to their site plan. Request is to abandon and declare surplus a portion of Thoroughbred Road right-of-way as shown on the attached plat marked Exhibit A, in the amount of 21,336 square feet, or .489 acres. The recommended solution is to abandon and dispose of said property. Said abandonment and disposals shall be per OCGA Title 32 in Chapter 7. County staff has determined that the westernmost 20 feet of the right-of-way could be abandoned without affecting the maintenance or public use of Thoroughbred Road, leaving the county with a 60-foot right-of-way. There will be a subsequent agenda item to this one concerning the authorization of the sale of the property. The abandonment has been publicly advertised in the Henry Herald dated March 2nd and 9th of 2016. of 2016. All adjoining property owners have been notified by certified mail. Be happy to answer any questions you may have on this particular agenda.
We'll take that and sell it as well, is that correct?
Excuse me, sir?
I'd say we will take that and sell it, just like the previous.
Yes, sir, that's great. You've got another, the next item, we'll deal with that.
Okay, does somebody move we approve this? Have a motion, District Two?
Second.
Second, District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution authorizes me to sell a certain real property for Henry County Department of Transportation. Yes, sir.
Thank you again, sir. The Board of Commissioners heard the abandonment and declaration of surplus property of portion of Thoroughbred Road right-of-way prior to this specific item today, and it is still shown in the area highlighted in Exhibit A. If, with the abandonment being approved, this request is to authorize sale of the declared surplus property shown in Exhibit A per OCGA 32 dash seven dash three and 32 dash seven dash four subsequent to the county's receipt of an appraisal on the property. The area in question is to be disposed of is twenty-one thousand three-hundred-and-thirty-six square feet or point four-eight-nine acres, and again, it's highlighted in the plat marked Exhibit A. We're in the process of having an appraisal done on the property, and once we do, we'll make sure that dollar figure is known. Happy to answer any questions at this time.
Anybody have any questions, any comments? Somebody move in that direction?
So move.
Have a motion, District Three?
Second.
Second, District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
County Attorney Resolution Amending Resolution 15 dash 181 Fiscal Year 2015-2016 Budget to Modify the County Fiscal Policy.
Chairman, the resolution before you will accomplish two things. The first thing it will do is amend the fiscal policy, which was part of your 2015-2016 budget, to authorize the county manager to approve salary increases, grade changes, reclassifications, and the creation of any new positions, provided there are sufficient funds in the department's budget, and that would be within the department those positions are created in. The second thing it will authorize is for the county manager or the assistant county manager, if so delegated by the county manager, to move funds within a department's budget. Can't move from one department to another. It will also authorize the department head to make transfers between line items in his or her department, as long as it doesn't exceed five hundred dollars. The purpose of these resolutions is to try to limit the administrative things that are brought to you and impose the obligation to make good, sound decisions on your management staff. And this is, I think, the second or third time we brought this to you, that, we brought it to you at the last meeting, and I neglected to address the budget issue, which is the second portion of it, and staff...
Anybody got questions or comments? If not, does somebody want to move in that direction? The A&amp;A?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, District Four, to approve it. Have a second from District Three, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Approval of the minutes from March 1st, 2016, as published, somebody move we approve them as published?
So move.
Have a motion, have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Chairman, Commissioner, comments? Chairman has none, I'm going to yield the floor to District Five.
No comments.
District Two?
No comments.
District Three?
They'll all like.
District One?
No comment.
District Four?
No comments.
County Manager, do you have any comment?
Yes, sir, I have a couple of things I want to run by, but given the late hour, Board Members, I have one constraint that I'm facing, that I'm going to need a vote on, and it appears this is relative to my insurance questions. I was going to roll out the first half of our budget tonight, but if I can meet with y'all during the week, we've got a different carrier for our insurance now, and instead of having a call meeting for it, I'd like to meet with the board and tell you what we've come up with and what our proposal is relative to the insurance. And if I can do that, then I'll wait till the 5th and make sure I've got y'all's concurrence, and as I understand it, that's the last drop-dead date that we can execute the agreement and get the new insurance online and effective by June 1. If we go any further out, I'm concerned that we would get crossed up and may have that lapse, so I would request that we have some time together to talk about the insurance and tell you what we've done. Mr. Gases and the crew will make themselves available. Obviously, we've got HR, and Ms. Saro can go over it with you also. We've got some good news about it. We did not get the huge bump we expected, so we are recommending a change. So, with that, if the board would be so kind to allow us to meet with y'all during the week, I'll defer any further comments on the budget as well as the insurance between now and the next meeting, and I'll make the budget presentation to y'all on the April 5th.
Sounds good. Is she going to make a presentation?
No, I think if we can get all this insurance done, we'll be fine and do the budget on April 5th also.
Okay.
It's only just getting more accurate.
That concludes your comments, right?
Sir?
That concludes your comments.
Incomplete.
Okay. County Attorney, you have any comments?
I'm going to say one thing really quick tonight. I've noticed as I stood at the podium on that next to last minute, y'all approved the minutes today from the last meeting, and I think that's noteworthy. You don't see that very often in local government, and I think the clerk should be commended for that.
Okay, the clerk has been commended. You got anything else? Upcoming meetings and events? April the 5th at 9:00 AM is a regular meeting, April the 19th, 6:30 is a regular meeting. I understand we've got some litigation pending, a potential litigation to discuss in executive session, is that correct, counsel?
And acquisition of real estate.
Acquisition of real estate. Having said that, will somebody move to adjourn executive session? For the purpose of acquisition of real estate pending and/or potential litigation. We have a motion, District Three?
Second.
Second, District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. I think y'all can go home if you like, I can't...